Abides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by Nebraska state law. Notice of meeting and copies of this agenda have been publicly posted prior to the meeting at Hickman City Hall, Hickman US Post Office, Ustop Market, and City Hickman website. There's a participant's signing sheet available and disclosure of meeting recording process notice posted. All individuals requesting to be registered agenda speakers must fill out a registered speaker card and submit to the recording clerk. The mayor or presiding meeting officer reserves the right to deny this request or will call you to the podium when your agenda item is ready to be heard. Presentations, if allowed, may be limited to five minutes per person. Please come to the podium and clearly state your name, address for the record, and agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Public hearing testimonies may be limited to five minutes per person. All individuals requesting to hand out documents to city council members must deliver them directly to the city clerk for distribution. City council may vote to go into executive closed session on any agenda item as allowed by Nebraska state law. The governing body may be excused and reenter the city council meeting room at any time after reconvening open session. Michelle, if you do roll call please.
Mayor, Karen.
Here.
Noren.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Zeman.
Eric.
Dohoda.
Here.
Cole Wiki.
Here.
Borkard.
Here.
Alright, so we will jump right into item three, which is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven. Adoption of the city budget statement to be termed annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date, and this is the second reading, so. If there's any discussion, we'll turn it over to Kelly. I know we've went over this since beginning of the month.
No dollar values have been changed.
No dollar values have been changed.
Everything is the same as what it was the last time.
This is strictly the public's hot least, et cetera, right, what we're doing?
This is what?
It specifies what we agree to in the CIGs.
Yes, it's in our state budget form, so on the pages it says exactly how much we're going to be spending on operations, capital improvements, debt service, and then any transfers.
Any questions for Kelly again?
I'll make a motion to waive figuring rule on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven.
Second. Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Noren, to waive the three reading rule for ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven. Uh, Michelle, if you'd call the roll.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Dohoda.
No.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borkard.
No.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven on second reading.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Wagner, second by Ms. Zeman to pass ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven on second reading. Is there any discussion? Final discussion. Saying's done, Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Dohoda.
No.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borkard.
No.
Alright, this will be on the agenda next week, so that's third reading. So, we will move to item number four, uh, property repairs at one oh three Chestnut Street. Thank everything, all pictures were in your electronic handbook. Uh, Kelly, if you would give us a little more details, a history of this.
Yes, of course. So, this data loss was on June ninth of two thousand twenty-five, and when the city had a contractor in town repairing sewer lines and flushing sewer lines and whatnot, and our contractor was actually cutting roots in the sewer main when the sewer backup happened at this commercial location. It was reported to our insurance company, LARM, at the time, and we had been speaking with the property owner and also Paul Davis, the company that was restoring the property, and they had sent us documentations and whatnot, and we kinda went through the process with the property owner discussing, a tort claim process with the city and that sort of thing. So, basically with our tort claim process, so it comes to you as a request for reimbursement to that property owner for the damages that incurred to the property from city business, potentially, and you have an option to pay this tort claim, or you have an option to refer it to your insurance company, which is the recommended option. Um, and then after it's, if it's recommended to the insurance company, they look at it, they do an investigation, they contact all the parties involved and whatnot, and they make a determination, and then that determination comes back to you for another final decision. So, it'd be my recommendation to refer this to the League Association of Risk Management, the city's insurance company, for consideration.
So, the question, something like this, I think we've had it before, did insurance pay for it? Did they cover it the last time?
They have in prior claims, yes.
What did you say the date was that when this happened?
June ninth.
June ninth?
Does it matter that it was a contractor or not, us?
Does he have insurance?
That it just flows through us first because it was city business.
The insurance will look into that.
Yeah.
The insurance will look into what happened, they will talk to staff that was on that day when the incident happened, they will talk to our contractor staff who was working that day, and our insurance company kinda does the investigation work, and then they make their determination.
And this is our contract, too, right?
That is correct, it was the city's contractor.
So, do you need a motion, or are we just telling you to do that?
A motion, no, a motion to refer it to the ins- city's insurance company would be recommended, please.
I have a question first. Kelly, are they able to use this now? Is it all clear that they're able to use the building?
Yes, we've been waiting for the, no, there was a delay because of the backup,
so they're not used yet?
And then there was, there just happened to be a secondary issue after this initial issue, so they had to take care of some other situations that with the company Paul Davis that was restoring them, um, that is not included with this claim amount, so. There was some time getting everything situated and the billing addressed correctly, which is why it's coming to a little later than June tenth.
So that I understand this better, that the contractor has insurance? So, there's like three insurance plays in this, right? There could be their insurance, the contractor's insurance, and ours, or how does that?
There are, I mean, that is a fair statement, there are three insurance companies potentially at play here.
I'm just wondering like how they would get paid, I mean, if it was our issue and then we're paying for it, like how does that work?
Yeah, so, um, and not in relating to this particular tort claim, but if any person in the city of Hickman would have a sewer backup, they may or may not have sewer backup coverage on their homeowner's insurance. Most citizens would potentially just, oh, it's an insurance claim on my homeowners, and if they have that coverage, they go that route. If a citizen did not have that type of coverage, which there are several citizens in town that do not, and it's always recommended you do, uh, so if they did not have that coverage, they would say, well, the city was flushing the lines, it's their fault that all that came back up into my private line, and they have an opportunity to present that to city council for consideration. However, it's always recommended to send to our insurance company so they can do a thorough investigation of the situation. Um, we do have photos and videos of the sewer lines and whatnot, so. It, this was in the course of routine maintenance, taking out some roots in a line, and there happened to have been a backup at the same time at the similar lo- at the same location, so. But yes, and then since we did hire a contractor for it, now if we were doing it ourselves with our sewer gutter, and it would just be us, that it would come to our insurance agency, um, but because the city did hire a contractor to do these services, our insurance company will inquire with them as well.
With contractor wasn't at fault, this is just something that happened.
I don't know that.
It's just something that happened.
That's something our insurance company will investigate.
And that's where the tort came, or tort claim came for, from, was the owner of the business, against the city?
That is correct, that is correct.
I'll make a motion to refer tort claim on property repairs at one oh three Chestnut to LARM Insurance.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mr. Borkard, second by Mr. Wagner, to refer property repairs at one oh three Chestnut Street to our insurance company, LARM. Any more discussion on that? Michelle, if you call roll please.
Noren.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zeman.
Yes.
Dohoda.
Yes.
Cole Wiki.
Yes.
Borkard.
Yes.
Alright, item number five, approval of bid form for construction contract with K two, construction for Scotts Creek Trail project.
Okay, on, uh, so as you all are aware, the award of this project was given to K two construction per your decision at a prior meeting. This is the agreement, after the bid is accepted and the letter of award is given to the contractor, and the agreement contains some very standardized contractual information in it. Um, so I would draw your attention starting at page twenty-three of the PDF, um, to go through a few things. My page twenty-three. Okay, so, we have the insurance on and all that good stuff that the contract requires. This is the agreement between the owner and the contractor. Um, here is your contract times. Um, contract times where work will be substantially complete on or before October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and completed and ready for final payment before November fifteenth, so this will be a rather quick turnaround on this project. Uh, liquidated damages, this is important to us because if the contractor does not fulfill their obligations by substantial completion, there is an eight hundred dollar, um, liquidated damages fee assessment for that day that expires after the substantial completion, which is October thirty-first, and then completion of the remaining work, so after the substantial completion, which is, or the final completion, which is November fifteenth, if the work is still not done, there's a five hundred dollar per day, uh, liquidated damages assessed for that. So, the contract price is as you have approved at the prior meeting, two hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Um, and as a reminder, we do have a grant from Nebraska Game and Parks for eighty percent, um, of our expenditures for this project up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so the city will be paying for twenty percent of this project and they grant eighty percent, and it's a reimbursement process, so we have to pay the bills in full, and then I request the reimbursement from the Nebraska Game and Parks. Uh, payment procedures, they will be submitting one payment request per month around the twenty-fifth day of the month. Those payment requests do go to our city engineer first for review and approval, and then our engineer writes a letter of recommendation for payment of that certificate of pay that comes to you at a city council meeting. And that's pretty much it. Everything's really basic, there are some other language in here in the prior pages that do refer to, um, Form FHWA twelve seventy-three, which we discussed at our pre-construction meeting this morning, so these are requirements because of our grant that we received for this project. So, all those grant requirements are also in this document, and they were reviewed again by, uh, you can see this is already been signed by the contractor. Um, they have reviewed it and approved it, so now it's coming for you for your approval, it'll be signed tonight, we'll send it over, and your contractor is going to be ready to mobilize for this project on Monday.
So, then mobilizing, uh, in this fiscal year, utilizing funds, are we kinda splitting the funds, no?
No, it'll all happen next fiscal year because there, there won't be any bills coming in the next, uh, fifteen days. Um, we, I didn't mention, we did have a pre-construction meeting, um, this morning, it went really well, so they did say, they gave us their construction schedule. Um, we reviewed that, which is a requirement of the contract, so we know what their construction schedule is. Um, I will bring it to note, however, in here, there is a thirteen day closure of Hickman Road for this project. Um, and I believe that's between October tenth and October twenty-ninth. It's, the calendar dates are more, but it's like basically thirteen business days. So, there are several days in which Hickman Road will be closed, we discussed only one lane being closed, but they do need the whole road for what they're doing when they're getting things ready on that side. They are gonna start construction on Hickman Road and work their way to the north. And that's their schedule for progressing through the construction. Um, they will try to minimize that timeframe if they can. So, I already have a notation, do put out some social media posts and emails to our Hickman Chamber of Commerce, so all of our business partners are aware, and also our, uh, social media followers that Hickman Road will be closed during those days.
Uh, but the Walnut Street, that is, I'm sorry, on?
Walnut Street.
So, Walnut Street, you, if both lanes are totally closed?
We'll talk to the contractor about that, since we have had concerns from persons that reside on Walnut, so we will make sure we talk to the contractor to make sure they have access in and out. It definitely should not fence, fence rock or autumn road, it's just in that place where they're connecting onto Hickman Road that they need to get everything, all the forms ready and, um, the concrete poured and that sort of thing, so.
That's, I know that was a concern for the city.
Mm-hmm, yep, and those persons, those parties on that street can also be notified individually via email, so I can do that as well. Not wrong.
So, they can access it?
When is trick or treat on the trail?
Yep. October thirtieth in Main Park.
Okay.
So, new location for Hick, for trick or treat on the trail this year, there'll be more ample parking, we don't have to close city streets, and we don't have a bunch of people walking through the streets downtown where there may be some additional traffic, so we will be.
So, this should be open by now.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes, this, yeah, we talked about that as well, if there's any, um, town celebrations or events in town that would be affected by that thirteen day closure, so that was the one we thought of as well. Um, the other thing I want to bring to light about this project is, if you don't mind, I'm gonna pull up the GIS real quick. Um, there are two property owners besides the city's easement involved in this project. Get in here. So, this is while they're restarting, and the trail actually comes out right about here, on this side of Mr. Jack Scott's parcel. So, um, we do have a resolution and for an easement that'll come forward to you at the September twenty-third meeting, um, to acquire some easement here for the trail from Jack and Cheryl Scott, which they're in agreements with, um, and of course, those documents have been prepared for a while, we just haven't gotten to the official vote yet, so that'll come forward to you. Um, and then when the trail is meandering, for the most part, on our sewer line easement through the properties here, this par- parcel here is owned by Cooper Construction, and of course, uh, this parcel here is not affected, but this one is. In discussions with the property owners, both of them, Mr. Dan Cooper from Cooper Construction has offered to give this outlaw aid to the city at no cost. He will donate it to the city for this project, so we do not have to acquire additional easement access from the Scotts Creek Outlet Two from Cooper Construction. Uh, that conversation was very recent, although we have had conversation in the past, but nothing has come to fruition. So, just to make you aware, I am, um, bringing forth documents, and we will do public notices to bring forth a resolution to you to accept that acquisition of land for this project for the benefit of our citizens.
How far north is that probably going?
A lot.
So, we're gonna take a valid opponent?
Yes, yes. Now, for the most part, I can tell you that the current owner of this parcel doesn't do much. There is definitely, when we walked the property today, there is some tree removal, light maintenance. For the most part, I would say all of your neighbors in Scotts Creek here, they are very good neighbors, and they take care of these adjacent portions of their parcel before the creek. Um, however, for the most part, this would include some maintenance on the city's part for mowing around that trail area, which we would need regardless, we would have to mow, you know, the sides of the trail anyway. So, this just makes it easier for us to get on there and get things done, and then cut back some of these trees. There are some personal belongings of Cooper Construction, um, that need to be removed out of there, or Jack Scotts that need to be removed off of there, but, um, we will be in touch with them again tomorrow, so.
So, we'll be taking over the entire parcel there?
Yes, and that parcel.
Where now, like you just said, the water?
Yeah, and that parcel, I do have s- stats here. It is five point three four acres, or just over twenty-three thousand square feet, so it is a larger parcel. But for the most part, I think we can view this as green space. It's not like an alley where you guys own it, and there's, I mean, there's still a responsibility to maintain it, but for the most part, it is a green space, it is an unbuildable lot. And I think the benefits for the trail project outweigh any risk that may be involved with the city taking on this parcel and acquiring this land.
Kelly, remind me, our trail's not going back by that water though, not at all, is that what you're saying, because?
No, it's not, no. No, this trail, um, would you like me to pull the picture?
I didn't, I didn't mean that, but I.
Wasn't it supposed to, what, the one conceptual plan to go up on the dam?
Over.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's because we had initially from when Scotts Creek was platted, there was, I, I don't, I think it was between.
Public access somewhere.
This one, I think it was in between eight eighteen and eight twenty, or eight twenty-two and eight twenty, there was a public access easement here
Yeah.
that can just remain there, unused, uh, but there was a public access easement because some preliminary trails were, oh, let's just connect the neighborhood and go over this way. Well, your guys' decision to do the underpass pedestrian on sixty-eight street was in much better joining of the trails, so. And it doesn't invade and leaves persons privacy as well with people using that trail space. And it's a really pretty area when we walked it today because it's so covered and it'll be shaded for the most part, I suspect. If I can pull up that trail ran here. There you go. So, I got a little bit bigger for you to know that, yes, it's pretty funny. Okay.
That'll be so nice.
Just a little bit, get it larger.
It's not so big down in the water.
No, not at all. You can, whoops.
That's alright, we got it.
Alright, thank you, it's, it just closed on me.
If you want me to try and help you.
Yeah, so, no, it is, it is definitely a safe distance away from the creek, so, or creek, however you'd like to pronounce that, so.
I feel that they, that lighting is not figured in this, correct?
It is not, but we did have, uh, discussions with the pre-construction meeting this morning, we did ask permission to lay some conduit in there
Okay.
for wiring, for future wiring for street license, and they were not opposed to the city putting that in there while they're doing the construction of the trails, so they were not opposed to that.
I mean, I think something needs to be fairly soon because it's gonna be pretty dark.
Yes, um, and the other thing I would like to bring to your attention is that the way this project was bid was for five inch concrete for this particular trail. Um, all of the other trails in Hickman have been poured with six inch concrete for durability when we're taking our trucks on it and whatnot, and so, uh, we are going to bring a change order forward right away on this project as soon as we can, hopefully at the September twenty-third meeting, because your staff, it's been recommended by them that they would like to go from a five inch to a six inch concrete, so they will give us that number. Um, and there's strong reasons in doing so. So, traditionally, a five inch concrete is fine if one of our city trucks were just to go on there for some light maintenance due to a mower, a smaller tractor. However, because this is all along our sewer lines, in the future, the sewer trunk line, manholes are, there's two of them located there. In the future, a very large VAC truck may have to get on this trail for access to those sewer manholes. They're very heavy, so that's one of the reasons for the requirement of six inch. And the other one is with the city potentially taking on the responsibilities of this outlaw, there could be some significant tree removal. There's a lot of dead trees there, so we're gonna be taking on that responsibility, and then to get a large truck back there to have some of that tree removal would put extra weight on that concrete as well, and that's why that recommendation and request for a change order to go from five inch to six inch concrete will be coming your way soon.
It will have rebar in that?
Uh, that is not recommended. I'm not following it right now.
So.
Rebar is not recommended, this six inch concrete is just as durable.
You have a big truck stand?
That is true, and I will have your city engineer explain why, because I'm not an engineer.
Oh, if the rest of the trails were six inch, why is this designed at five?
Standard, it is standard, this is, again, a grant project, so they standardize a lot of stuff to meet those grant requirements, and then, I, it was just overlooked in the process, but it shouldn't be a significant cost, because they already have a cost for concrete making the forms, it's just more.
Really, a trail should not be driven on, probably, so.
Well, alright.
By is sufficient, but it seems like our trails, you get, are an access for everybody to work on their backyards and, uh, aloe, all tail, or wind stream.
Well, this is kinda in the middle of nowhere, but I get it, it's for.
It is, and this one, the access, you're gonna have a VAC truck potentially in the future down there to deal with those manholes, or we're gonna have some large tree removal equipment back there potentially, so those are things to take into consideration.
I think if we add that, then we can get off the trail too, if it's going, like, if it's our lot, can't drive, we'll go back there on that.
Yes.
Kelly, I got one other question, are you on the agreement?
Yes, we are still on this agreement.
Go to the second to last page.
Okay.
Right there, well, screw up one. Right there. So, this is between us and the bidder, right?
Yes.
This agreement.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Did Olson's take care of all this for us?
Yes. And actually, September, I think there was a September date that is just past that we're opening up.
Because. Well, there is, but there, there are also, I mean, I'm surprised they don't have anything on the Invaders Species Act, because now we gotta look forward to a bat that is potentially shutting everything, tree removal down until November. I thought all the trees were taken out already.
Yeah, so all of our federal regulations involved with this, um, there is a form that has to be filled out by our contractor for the Federal Highway Administration, Form twelve seventy-three, and that kinda deals with a lot of the requirements for the grant.
Right, I mean, I, when I saw tree removal.
Mm-hmm.
On the bid, that can, just, I mean, that's just one thing.
Yeah, and the city's already gone through outside of those realms of bird migration and nesting, um, and took trees down, if you remember, two years ago to prepare for this project. Right now, it's more of a lot of dead trees and debris, but there could be some others, but.
But sometimes they use the dead trees.
They will follow the rules, it is in your contracts, so.
Just quietly.
Mm-hmm.
When do you expect to see this trail opening to the public? Do you have like an idea?
November sixteenth.
November sixteenth?
Ideally.
I could be so optimistic.
Do you know what these, uh, sign, the sign post, sign post anchors, signs, does that? Because with the signs that we were talking about before, aren't we already doing signs at that location? The crosswalk signs?
Crosswalk signs, I don't know, way, I don't know.
Right. I don't think we were planning.
Those are, those were part of this project.
They were?
I think so, because we don't, we, we bought signs for what was already in place for crossings, this would be a new crossing.
It's also weird.
Striping the signage.
Sign, four sign posts, four sign post anchors, six signs.
I was thinking, I was thinking that wasn't the linking ones that are there.
And this. Yeah.
Not here, this is standard, so.
These ones, right.
Right.
These are standard crossing signs.
Okay.
And then that grant that you mentioned, are we, I was thinking the same thing as Steve was. Can we utilize more of that grant for including lighting in that?
No.
That's all I wanted to.
We're not allowed for this time because the grant was approved with this project planned, and the lighting would be above and beyond that scope, so it could jeopardize the funding if we were to try to change the project at this time. Sorry.
Pay more money for the fence.
But, because we're on the trail, raises monies for trail lighting, and, uh, uh, value is growing nicely, so we do have ones that they will hold to hold up, huh?
Yeah.
They're good.
Um, where did you say it was closed from, Hickman Road? The whole?
Ten or ten about ten twenty there.
No, but I mean, they closing the whole thing?
They do have to close both lanes.
I mean, can we just have them go to like Main Street or something, so?
No, it'll just be this little portion right here.
Okay.
So, the tr- the trail comes down.
Okay.
Right through here, so at, where this triangle is here, that's where the easement we're in access, and it comes out right here. So, when they get ready to do what they have to do for thirteen days, they'll, they need.
Right. But I mean, the whole Hickman Road's not gonna be closed.
Yes.
But she's gonna try and create a disruption.
Both lanes, I'm sorry, let me rephrase, both, both lanes of Hickman Road will be closed just outside of Walnut Street.
Gotcha, okay.
Not from, not from auto, um, just that portion.
So, not from, yeah.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So, am I not in the Walnut Street?
I don't anticipate that, because that did not come up during our pre-construction meeting, but, um, I will make sure that everybody's aware of it.
Just in case.
And you're urged to have we keep one light moving if possible.
If possible, yeah, closed road and portions of sidewalk, so similar to us having to close Hickman Road when they, uh, Elliott Concrete was pouring the trail on Hickman Road. Those equipment pieces are just so large, they need all of that space to get in there and get that done, so. But they are very willing to try to minimize that closure as much as possible.
We'll push that to school, obviously, too, and for the bus, I think.
Absolutely, yes. Yep. And because it's thirteen days, we can even do an official detour route and put it on Google and Apple Maps, which we did with the roundabout too, so.
That, that'd be good, that's a good idea.
Sorry, any questions? Yes, please.
I'll make a motion for approval of the bid for, from, for, form for construction contract with K two construction for Stats Creek Trail project in the amount of two hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred and forty one dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Alright, motion was made by Miss Zeman, second by Mister Borkard to approve the bid form for construction contract with K two, construction for Scotts Creek Trail project in the amount of two hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred and forty one and fifty cents. Is there any other discussion? Same's done, Michelle, if you call the roll please.
Noren?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Gahoda?
Yes.
Kowicki?
Yes.
Borkard?
Yes.
Alright. That'll be a huge plus for the community. It'll be nice once, uh, connect with the trail, know where our son called it.
It'll finally go somewhere.
Yeah, it will. I'm gonna invite Alan to uh go from one side to the other first. So with that, we'll go to item number six. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, motion was made by Mister Borkard, second by Miss Zeman to adjourn. Michelle, if you call the roll please.
Noren?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zeman?
Yes.
Gahoda?
Yes.
Kowicki?
Yes.
Borkard?
Yes.
Alright, meeting is adjourned.